Thank you for listening and supporting the Daily Memphian. Sign up for one of our many free newsletters and breaking news alerts at dailymemphian.com/email to receive the latest local news stories impacting our community. Our weekly newsletters cover everything from sports to arts and culture, business, food, and more, along with daily updates of all the news we publish each day. Sign up or manage your email preferences at dailymemphian.com/email.
This is the Daily Memphian Politics Podcast. I'm Bill Dries. The main event is former County Commissioner Steve Mulroy and the renewed debate about a new voting system for Shelby County, as well as whatever happened to ranked choice voting. Top of the podcast, Tennessee House Speaker Cameron Sexton has made the formal request for the legislature to return to session this year. The terms of what the legislature would take up are more general than normally seen in special session calls, but it makes clear the autonomy from the state Health Department that the Shelby County Health Department currently has, along with five other health departments in the state's largest cities, is in the crosshairs. So is what Sexton terms, quote, "the ongoing discrimination of Tennesseans by prohibiting their access to buildings due only to their vaccination status." This would presumably include all five of the city's major hospital groups who have now ordered employees to get vaccinated before they can report for work after a certain date. Not sure how County Mayor Lee Harris's executive order will fare in this. It says all county employees working in the pandemic effort, starting with health department workers, must be vaccinated by next month or undergo weekly testing until they are vaccinated. Sexton writes, "The special session is to, quote, 'address misdirected and mandated responses to COVID-19 by local entities and officials.'" He says those responses pose, quoting again, "the potential of significant harm to Tennesseans." This continues a theme by Sexton that paints medical and public health professionals, as in his words, "bureaucrats who should not have the ability to make decisions," he says, "should be made by elected officials." During Sexton's visit to the city earlier this month, he dismissed a doubling of COVID-19 cases among children at La Bonner over a 10-day period and the deaths of two children from COVID at the hospital during that time by saying it was, quote, "a lot of RSV mixed in with a little bit of COVID." RSV is a respiratory virus that Sexton says is up here because Shelby County school students did not have in-person classes last school year. Dr. Menoje Jane, the infectious disease specialist advising the city since the beginning of the pandemic, says RSV and COVID are two separate things in terms of transmission, with COVID infection, namely the Delta variant, creating huge outbreaks, especially in school settings. Sexton's special session letter was signed by every Republican in the state House majority, including all four House Republicans in the Shelby County delegation to Nashville, Mark White, Tom Leatherwood, Kevin Vaughn, and John Gillespie. Shelby County Commissioner Mick Wright wants a legal opinion from the county attorney's office on precisely what the powers of the Health Department are in issuing directives, and it's interesting from the perspective that Wright takes on what Governor Lee and other Republican leaders talked about changing in that regard during the regular session this year and the actual changes that were made, which are different. For instance, Wright points out the state law specifically on health directives by the county health officer reads in part that the directive can include, quote, "rules and regulations as are necessary or appropriate to protect the general health and safety of the county." Wright wants to know what that means specifically in making what he terms "subjective determinations" and quoting again from Wright's letter, "extending authority over every student in Shelby County against the will of six elected municipal school boards and the stated intent of Governor Lee and other state-elected leaders." That's a reference to the latest health directive that requires masks in all public and private K-12 schools in the county, which Lee has said he opposes, but which he concedes is within the power of the county health officer here to order. Shelby County Health Director Dr. Michelle Taylor saying the Health Department is within its authority to mandate masks there and elsewhere in the county. The Memphis City Council has asked for such a countywide mandate. The Shelby County Commission is considering a similar resolution that Taylor says she is also ready to consider, but the commission put off a vote on that this past week, that after a group of about 30 anti-maskers organized by the group Conservative Women of Collierville came to the commission chambers to argue children did not need masks even as children were dying at La Bonner from the virus. They repeated discredited and thoroughly refuted theories that masks help spread the virus by trapping the virus, where it is inhaled by someone who would already have the virus if that were the case. The group tangled with Commissioner Tammy Sawyer on social media even before the in-person meeting. Sawyer returning fire, referring to the group as "the United Karens of Collierville" and "Confederate Women of Collierville." This is the same group that has joined the call for a new voting system based in hand-marked paper ballots, an alliance we will talk with Steve Mulroy about in just a bit on this podcast. And to note about that, the interview was recorded before the group's appearance at the commission. Apart from that, the county commission returned to its own debate of a week earlier in committees about whether a mask mandate is worth it if there is no work on lining up enforcement from other agencies. Some arguing a mandate gives businesses the basis to require masks and post signs to that effect on their doors and still remain open. Others saying they want to avoid the Health Department getting into the enforcement business again, as it did earlier in the pandemic. Republican U.S. Senators Marsha Blackburn and Bill Hagerty among the no votes on the $1.2 trillion infrastructure bill approved by the Senate this past week, with the votes of other Republicans. Blackburn and Hagerty also voting no on the follow-up $3.5 trillion bill that includes a wider range of infrastructure projects, which passed the Senate by a much closer margin, much closer to a party-line vote at 50 to 49. Both packages still face House votes and probably more bargaining. Hagerty drawing national coverage for his bid to delay the Senate vote on the smaller of the two bills that succeeded in delaying what was to be a weekend vote to the following Tuesday. Hagerty also getting some encouragement and a shout-out from former President Donald Trump as Trump criticized Senate Republican Leader Mitch McConnell for leading Republicans in the chamber supporting the measure. Blackburn and Hagerty both said the bill should have been focused on just infrastructure and instead branded its components as socialism. Blackburn found time to retweet a link of talk show host Clay Travis at a Williamson County School Board meeting, leading a group of anti-maskers who taunted doctors, calling for masking requirements that the school board there eventually approved. Blackburn leading into the retweet with this, quote, "no masks for kids," and commending Travis for, quoting again, "standing up for common sense." A few days later, she reacted to Centers for Disease Control guidance urging pregnant women to get the COVID vaccine by tweeting, quote, "The recent movement to erase women is disturbing and has made its way into our bureaucracy." Back in Nashville, the Tennessee Journal reporting that Governor Bill Lee's top lobbyist on the Hill, Brent Easley, sent a memo to legislators just before we record this to dispel rumors about the state's latest executive order on the pandemic. Easley feeling the need to dispel five of what he says are the most frequently shared items relayed to his office. Those would be the existence of quarantine camps, followed by the National Guard forcibly vaccinating people in their homes, and also rounding up Tennesseans for relocation to quarantine camps, and permanent lockdowns. The permanent lockdowns are something that Blackburn has raised the possibility of. Another shared item Easley says won't happen is vaccinating livestock as a way to vaccinate Tennesseans by introducing the vaccine through the food supply. Easley telling legislators in the email that all of that is demonstrably false and are among the items most frequently being shared and misinterpreted. The Shelby County Democratic Party Convention goes online with the first of the two sessions, moved back now to August 21st. This is the part where delegates are chosen for the August 28th gathering, which is where the delegates will select a new executive committee and a new grassroots committee, which will both then elect a new local party chairman. The chairman is a race between former local party chairman Cory Strong and state legislative candidate Gabby Salinas. Meanwhile, four years after Salinas gave Republican State Senator Brian Kelsey a run for his money in the 2018 elections, Ruby Powell Dennis, a Democratic strategist, CEO of the Elect Black Women PAC, and Chair of the Tennessee Women's Political Caucus, has announced that she will run for the Democratic nomination in the August 2022 primaries for Senate District 31 to meet Kelsey in the November 2022 general election. Joining us now is Steve Mulroy, former Shelby County Commissioner and a University of Memphis Law School professor, and one of the most vocal advocates of a switch from voting machines, also known as ballot marking devices in the discussion, to a voting system of hand-marked paper ballots. So Steve, the county commission last month rejected a $3.9 million contract for a system picked by the Election Commission of touchscreen machines with a paper readout of a voter's choices fed into digital scanners and from there into a ballot box. The chairman of the Election Commission, Brent Taylor, said on this podcast two editions ago that he will not take the same contract back to the five-member body, but that the group will review its options, which include going to Chancery Court in a lawsuit over this, picking a paper ballot system, or some compromise. What do you think the Election Commission should do? And is this a matter of go paper or go machine with no middle ground?
Two good questions. As to the first question, I'd say what the Election Commission should do is simply come back to the county commission with a hand-marked paper ballot solution. The county commission has voted four different times now. The funding body of the county voted in January, April, and October of 2020, and then just last month, rejecting the idea of a glitch-prone, overpriced, hackable ballot marking device system in favor of a more secure, low-tech, reliable, hand-marked paper ballot system, which is half the cost. And I think it's entirely within the legitimate discretion of the county commission to say, "We don't want to spend twice as much for a system that's half as secure." And I'll also note that this was a bipartisan vote on the part of the county commission. You had Republican Commissioners Bradford and Mick Wright both voting at various times against the Election Commission's position and in favor of the hand-marked paper ballot position. And I think, you know, you're seeing a grassroots effort among Republicans, as well as Democrats, emerging, especially in light of the 2020 election, in favor of the more secure, low-tech system. So I think what the Election Commission should do is bow to the will of the people of both parties, you know, defer to the governing body, and go with the system that is used in about 70% of the counties already in the United States. Well over 2/3 of U.S. voters are using this system. Now, as to is there a middle ground? The only middle ground that seems to me that would work would be an acknowledgement that, under federal law, even if we go to a hand-marked paper ballot system, which is what I think we should do, every precinct is still going to have a ballot marking device anyway for the disabled voters. If they feel more comfortable using a ballot marking device, then whatever small percentage of voters have an actual disability can do that. And we don't really need to check people's disability ID cards. We can just take their word for it if they express an affirmative preference for a ballot marking device because of a claimed disability. If we did that and we baked that flexibility in, I think that might be a compromise that might work. But short of that, I really don't see a valid solution that doesn't have hand-marked paper ballot being the primary method, and then ballot marking device reserved for the small percentage of voters who just can't make a paper ballot work.
And Brent Taylor proposed, and the Election Commission approved, giving voters an option of paper ballots or voting on machines. And I believe that your objection to this was that it should be more neutral than that if that was what was going to do, that the two should be able to coexist. Am I right on that?
Yeah, I think that's right. I mean, the so-called compromise proposal was actually a system in which the primary method would be a ballot marking device. But for those voters who were savvy enough and insistent enough to ask and insist for a paper ballot, they might be able to get a paper ballot. But I think that puts the emphasis exactly backwards. Under that system, an awfully large portion of the vote, I mean, certainly a majority and more than that, would be on ballot marking devices. And since we're saying that ballot marking devices aren't secure, they can be hacked or they can go glitchy, to have that large chunk of the vote not subject to a valid audit introduces an unacceptable level of non-security. We have to have a system in which the vast majority of votes are cast on a reliable, secure, auditable, hand-marked paper ballot system.
As you alluded to, there is a Republican women's group in Collierville that has become very vocal on this issue and very, very vocal in favor of hand-marked paper ballots. Talk to me as a Democrat about kind of what a unique time this is for this issue when you have that kind of an alliance on this. Do you have any reservations about that?
No, I have no reservations because it seems to me that people from all walks of political life can get together on the issues that they agree on. I do think "unique" maybe would be one word to describe it, Bill. You know, it's certainly a politics-makes-strange-betfellow situation, but I think that, I think activists of all stripes, but certainly on the left, have for a long time now been raising the alarm about the security issues involved whenever you have computerized voting machines running our elections. I don't think it was exclusively a thing on the left, but certainly after the election 2020 controversy, an awful lot of people on the right have been sensitized to the issue. And it's not just Dominion voting machines, but all voting, electronic, computerized voting machines are potentially, you know, hackable or can go glitchy. I think this is sort of a baby in bathwater situation because I'm not saying that the most extreme conspiracy theories on the right are true. I'm not saying that Hugo Chavez from the dead helped Joe Biden steal the election, but that doesn't mean that there's not a kernel of truth in those voices on the right that say, "Look, if we don't have an actual, real, auditable paper record to cross-check the computer records, we'll never completely be certain that we can have confidence in the integrity of the election results." And I think to that extent, that's an area where both the right and the left can join hands.
And I think you actually made a distinction sometime back when Stop the Steal was really prominent in news coverage, that the problems you're talking about are not as much the technology as they are how people use the technology, right?
I think that's right. I mean, there are really two problems with ballot marking devices. The one is that studies show that most voters don't actually carefully scrutinize the paper receipt to make sure it's accurate before they take it out of the ballot marking device computer and stick it into the scanner. But more fundamentally, even if you assume that all voters did do a perfect job of scrutinizing that piece of paper, what the scanner records in a ballot marking device system is a barcode, an electronic barcode, kind of like the UPC symbols we see at grocery checkout stores. And no human can read a barcode. So even if voters are looking at these paper receipts, and most won't, they won't really be able to tell whether the paper receipt is accurate because they can't read a barcode.
Next year is a big ballot year, the longest ballot of any election cycle in Shelby County politics. So if the decision is to go to hand-marked paper ballots, will that require a lot of different versions of the ballot with the right district races to be printed and ready for voters at early voting sites and Election Day precincts?
With respect to early voting, the way you do that in hand-marked paper ballot jurisdictions across the country, and this is proven technology, it has been used for years and years, is something called a ballot-on-demand printer. And that is a printer that you put at each of the 20 or so satellite early voting locations in Shelby County. The voter comes in and they say, "I'm in, you know, precinct 463." And the election person punches in 463 and outsputes the proper paper ballot for that particular voter. So any voter from anywhere in the county can go to any satellite early voting location during the early voting period, as is their right, and get the correct ballot. And I know that that's not an issue with the Election Commission because back when Brent Taylor and Linda Phillips, the election administrator, were proposing this so-called compromise solution last year that you referred to, they themselves included ballot-on-demand printers in early voting as part of their own proposed solution.
You've heard a lot of the arguments on the other side, probably all of the arguments, that people will mark paper ballots in all kinds of ways that will require a group of Democrats and Republicans reviewing the ballot, looking them over, and making conclusions about what the voter meant. What do you say to that?
Well, what I say to that is that that has not been, in fact, the proven experience of the, you know, literally thousands of elections that have been held in the last couple of decades using hand-marked paper ballot systems, a system that has been used consistently now in over 35 states, 70% of the counties, over 2/3 of U.S. voters have been using hand-marked paper ballot systems for years. Locally, it's been used for decades in DeSoto County, in Hamilton County. It was recently adopted by Republican Knox County a couple of years, a year or two ago. That has not been the actual lived experience in any of those jurisdictions. And the reason is simple, is that the modern scanner technology has evolved to the point where it is able to detect errors like overvoting, like voting for more than one person in a race, and alerting the voter to that kind of thing. And they've also evolved to the point where if the voter only partially fills out the oval or something, or there's a stray mark near the oval and they didn't quite do it right, the scanners are smart enough to still figure out that's what the voter intended. So you don't really have the, you know, voluminous, frequent, constant disputes over how to read the hand-marked paper ballots. And in those instances in which you do use the paper ballots to do audits, the audits work fine.
So the scanner alerts a voter, a voter fills out their hand-marked paper ballot, and they do it wrong in some way or incomplete in some way, and they take it over to the digital scanner to run it through, and the digital scanner sends it back to them?
Right.
And there's some kind of notice that says, "You marked this with an X when you should have filled in the circle."
Right, yeah. And actually, the scanners are smart enough now that if you use an X in the right dot rather than the circle, it would accept that. But if, for example, you know, you partially filled in one circle for candidate Bill Dries and then put in another circle for candidate Steve Mulroy, it would spit that out, saying, "No, wait a minute, you overvoted. Do this again."
If this is paper ballots, do you think a lot of voters are going to be surprised by this change? And will some measure of voter education be required for this?
I think some measure of voter education is going to be necessary. I think whenever you change any kind of voting system, like, you know, with instant runoff voting, which I'd also like to talk about briefly before we go, voter education is going to be necessary. But I don't think that's, you know, a terrible obstacle. I mean, every one of us has spent time filling out Scantron sheets, you know? We either took the SAT or the ACT or, you know, some test or other in school. It's not a foreign thing. It's common to all of us. And like I said, in those many jurisdictions that have used it, voters have adapted to it just fine.
Right. And to your point about ranked choice voting, we saw each other at the People's Summit in Whitehaven last month, and you had a QR code for ranked choice or instant runoff voting. Ranked choice voting is a part of the city charter, but so are runoff elections and single-member district council races when no one gets a majority on Election Day. And in 2019, by way of background, voters rejected in referendums proposals by the city council to take those two provisions out of the charter. So what's the next step in this issue that has been somewhat overshadowed by the move to a new voting system?
Right. So the next step is continuing litigation. We actually had an administrative hearing before the state coordinator of elections, Mark Goins, just yesterday in Nashville, which we put on our proof. We have a nationally recognized expert in how to implement ranked choice voting elections who testified both as to the technical feasibility of implementing instant runoff voting using either the current Shelby County equipment or any future equipment we might adopt, and also as to the lack of any conflict between Tennessee statutes and instant runoff voting in Tennessee. Whatever the coordinator decides, you know, that will be appealed up to Chancery Court in Davidson County. This process will probably take until, you know, the spring of next year or thereabouts. We are confident that we will have an answer, one way or another, well in advance of the 2023 elections, which is the next time that instant runoff voting could be used. And Bill, if I could, I just want to make one point about this litigation that I just referred to. The Memphis City Council went out of its way to intervene in this lawsuit and assist the state of Tennessee in trying to block implementation of instant runoff voting. So what you have here is the Memphis City Council incumbents, who saw that IRV was making elections more competitive, and as you noted, tried to repeal it with not one but two different repeal referenda, which the voters both decisively rejected. They are using our tax dollars to send their lawyer into court to nonetheless block implementation IRV, rather than respecting the will of the people, which has been expressed in a grand total of three different referenda, the two we just talked about, plus the original one back in 2008. And it just seems to me that this speaks of such a profound contempt on the part of our city council members, all of them, for the expressed will of the voters. The state of Tennessee is perfectly adequate to represent the anti-IRV position in court. They don't need the Memphis City Council in the case, but they're going out of their way to go into the case and block implementation, basically thumbing their nose at all of the Memphis voters who, in three different referenda elections, said they wanted to try IRV. I think it's an underreported story. It's frankly disgraceful.
And to be clear, Mark Goins, who is the state election coordinator, you basically need his approval for IRV to, or ranked choice voting to happen, correct?
That's correct. And so we're going into court to either try to get Mark Goins to change his mind or to get a Chancery Court to overrule him. So it's us pro-IRV advocates versus the state, and that's fine, but I don't see why the Memphis City Council needs to be involved at all. So, you know, I would call upon you and every other member of the media to ask the city council members, you know, would they support or introduce a resolution to instruct their lawyer to stop trying to go into court to block IRV? Or do they support using Memphis tax dollars to continue to fight IRV implementation in court and thus overriding and disregarding the expressed will of the voters in three different referenda?
And some of them are listening, and I predict we will hear from them as well on this point, because as you point out, this was a different city council in 2019. This was on the ballot for the set of 13 council races that effectively elected a new council with six new members to it.
You know, I'm so glad you brought that up, Bill, because, so after the 2018 referenda, the two repealed referenda were rejected, there was a 2019 Memphis City Council election. As you noted, six new members. And on the campaign trail, we asked the candidates what they thought about this issue. And the new crop of city council members said on the campaign trail, in many instances publicly, "Look, I've got no beef against IRV. If the voters want it, I don't think we should be doing anything to block it." Because even then, the Memphis City Council was in court trying to block it. So you would think that some of these new council members, you know, like Michael and Easter Thomas, and JB Smiley, and Jeff Warren, whom I consider friends and I think are, you know, great leaders, you would think some of them, who publicly said during their election campaign that they didn't like this effort to block IRV implementation, would actually do something about it. But instead, they're sitting on their hands and allowing their, you know, pre-2018 colleagues who are unalterably opposed to IRV to carry the day.
So at the hearing, the administrative hearing this past week, was this the administration, the city administration that was?
No, no. The city administration has been resolutely neutral on this issue throughout. They have never taken a position either publicly or in litigation, on the referenda, against the referenda, in court, or anything. They basically have deferred to the city council on this issue and the city- And the city council sent in its lawyer, he was there, Alan Way was at the hearing yesterday, joining the state in every motion and argument to block IRV, as he has done for the last several years throughout this litigation.
Interesting, interesting. A final point, as our time runs short here on Zoom. Do you miss being a county commissioner? And could we see you on the ballot in 2022?
When I actually attend a county commission meeting, that's when I realize I don't miss being on the county commission. Sometimes I think I do, then I go to a meeting and I get educated. I don't have any plans to run in 2022. You know, a great American, Ronald Wilson Reagan, said, "Never say never." But I don't really think that I'm doing that right now.
All right. We will leave it there. We've been talking with University of Memphis Law School professor and former county commissioner Steve Mulroy.
This week on Behind the Headlines, Tennessee Transportation Commissioner Clay Bright and Bobby White of the Greater Memphis Chamber on the nearly three-month shutdown of the Hernando DeSoto Bridge. What comes next now that the bridge has reopened? Defining what is meant by a third bridge across the river at Memphis? And some early guestimates on what the Biden infrastructure package means for road projects in Memphis and across the state. You can also hear the show on our Behind the Headlines podcast, which includes an extended conversation beyond what is on the TV episode. Subscribe to The Daily Memphian at DailyMemphian.com. Subscribe to this podcast and our others at Google Play, iTunes, Spotify, and Stitcher. I'm Bill Dries. The Daily Memphian Politics Podcast is produced by Natalie Van Gundy.
In-depth journalism in the Memphis community. The Daily Memphian is of Memphis, not just in Memphis, and seeks to tell the stories of this city. TheDailyMemphian.com. Truth in place.